All right, I think we we have a full house. Councilman Chris Valinsky.
Thank you very much. And uh, I wanted, before we get really going, I wanted to thank Angie for uh, setting up the meeting and and uh, working on accommodating and doing it early so, some some people can uh, for workdays uh, can make make the meeting. Thank you, Angie. We are here to, I um, I guess I brought attention to the fact that we have been using MVH funds to do work in the TIF districts. And we have uh, I know some people have voiced concerns about this. So, I don't have to, I don't really think I have to explain my position because as a ward representative, I'm concerned about getting things done in the wards that have been neglected for many, many years. And that's not any department heads' problems. That's uh, for me, that's a problem for the administration. Uh, who, you know, I I guess you have to look at the how this situation, this thing works through the administration directing people to do certain things, to put grants together and things like that, things of this nature. And I thought we made it clear at our meeting, at our workshop in two thousand and two, that we were, we were dissatisfied. And I know that work was done in some of the wards, but I was still dissatisfied with that. I do understand that some work was done in the fifth ward and the sixth ward. And I, I, I was okay with doing uh, MVH funds, but not the whole other things that they were doing in in these areas. Now, if a TIF, my personal opinion, if a TIS isn't working, then that TIF should be dissolved. If you, and you can't even loan money to a TIF from another TIF, but I don't want to get into discussing all the TIF things because of that avenue. But what I will say is what our workshop we had with the redevelopment commission, that they have three million plus or what they might have in it after this last draw, I'm not sure. And they have over five million in the South End TIF. So the bottom line to me is uh, the TIF needs to stand on its own two feet. And they did the um, a big project out in the uh, South End TIF. And the, and the uh, road that's being discussed on being done right now is not in, as far as I'm concerned, in a neighborhood. It is a quote unquote, quote, "commercial semi-industrial area", which that's what the TIF money should be used for, for, for those uh, for that. So now with the amount of money that they want to use and get from the state, that's almost nine hundred thousand dollars that could be used for paving in the neigh- in the neighborhoods. And identify, we already identified these streets on that Paser study. And that Paser study is already three, or it might be four years old this year. So if a lot of these streets that were designated are are in bad shape, they should have already been on a list to get done. And we should be going and uh, going after and getting this work done and using that community crossing money in those areas. Each ward, I'm sure, and I wouldn't have a problem if they had a list and they were gonna do work in these areas. But not to be willy nilly and say, oh, we're gonna do this project, one hundred fifty million out of MVH funds, oh, that'll equal nine hundred thousand. And the the wards are sitting here dry again. No work done in the wards. So, I've looked at the, just the map for the second ward. And it is dire straits. There are so many threes on that map. And if we don't start doing these, and if we don't as uh, effort with the, with the council, everyone's effort to recognize that this work needs to be done. The work, these streets are literally at the point on being a three, they're falling apart. I haven't seen a list identified yet. I mean, that work's gonna be done to this day. Now, and we've been talking about it for a long time. Now, if people are uh, wanna argue about the legislation, well, I don't wanna, I don't, I really don't want to argue about it. If you, if you want to think about amending it or doing something like that, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm gonna be, I I will say this. I was elected to represent the second ward, first of all. The so with, I think that as an elected representative and walking that ward and looking at that Paser map, that we should work as a team to identify our worst streets, because it's very plain. The statistical data is already accumulated to say these streets need to be done. How many are you gonna do in the second ward, third ward, fourth ward, fifth ward, sixth ward? Now, that's what's really should be do- being done. So we didn't, I would not, or anybody wouldn't have to put legislation forward. It's called cooperation. That's what it's called, in a team effort. So, uh, that's, that's really where I'm, where I'm at with it. And uh, you know, I know that the we have representatives here from, you know, the TIF, uh, representing the TIF area. But I want to remind the council members that are on today. Where's the list that was, is developed by the administration, sitting down with a workshop, with all of us as a team and saying, these streets are atrocious. These streets need to be done. It it's really a simple, simple matter. It's not about us against them, but I will be, I am not about being my way or the highway. Train of thought. And that's what's going on here with this Cleveland Ave project. Who agreed that, I don't remember us saying, oh yeah, let's go forward with that.
Yeah, and we, and we did.
I don't remember that.
We did. So can I, can I add something? I know we got uh,
Go ahead, Angie.
Two committee meetings. So, so uh, going back to the um, the, the memo from the clerk, so this is in reference to prohibiting the use of the MVH funds for constructing and repairing streets within the TIF district. And the reason, and 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 Paul gave some background and, and and the reason why um, you know, I know one of the reasons why um, um, this, you know, legislation is is put forth is because of where, where, where Councilman Chris Valinsky was going is that we, we did have a workshop in January, at the end of January, and we had discussions about multiple streets and multiple areas. We talked about Cleveland being bad. But we also said we wanted some input into the future grant that went out. And I thought we had time for that. Um, we didn't make a decision on Cleveland Avenue. That, that um, committee meeting specifically was about what was on the agenda previously. And that was for, we talked about the sidewalks, we talked about the grant, you know, the grant match. Um, because we had to pass it, um, pass it legislatively so they could get the grant in. And that grant was on a a different list. I, Cleveland Avenue, this is a, a new project. I'm, I guess I'm confused with with that part, but I think part of the reason why this legislation is here is because the entire grant match is for repairing that street. And, you know, Cleveland Ave, I, I, I understand. Um, you know, the concern, I had a concern. I, I sent it back and I was like, okay. You know, I, I thought what really came out of that workshop is that we wanted more streets done in the neighborhoods, and we know that Cleveland Avenue is bad. People are complaining about it, but um, you know, I, I, I expressed that, you know, I wasn't comfortable or or in, in separating and segregating out TIF funds when, you know, just because a resident lives in a, in a, a TIF area. And some, you know, wards have heavier TIF areas than others, and it's not fair. So one of the things, and and Councilwoman Zigus can chime in after, you know, after I'm done, but one of my things is MVH funds is based on the entire city mileage. And I guess if that's the case, if we start excluding, using funds for MVH in different parts of the city, will the state come back and say, well, we're not gonna calculate your MVH based on your total streets because you're saying that you're not gonna use MVH anywhere else? I, I'm not sure if that's a, if that's, you know, an issue or not. Um, but I, I feel like we're being forced to spend money um, that we didn't agree to. And um, we don't want to ever lose a match, but we don't want to always be forced into doing something without any input. If you gotta come before the council, we should have input before it's submitted. And um, I know I've asked Jim Meyer to, to start drafting an ordinance for any city entity, entity or administrator, or anyone who wants to, uh, if they need to come before the council to get a match, they gotta, they have to present the plan to us first. You can't submit a grant without us seeing it first and having some input because basically, we're asking for four hundred fifty thousand dollars to, to, to match along with the RDC to to deal with, you know, Cleveland Avenue. Um, South Cleveland Avenue. And I will say this about Cleveland Avenue. I think, you know, that's an economic development area that, you know, we need the road. I mean, we have a spec building out there now. We got some feeder roads that are gonna be built. So it is a ecod- a, you know, economic development area. Um, but man, we could have used those monies in, in the neighborhoods. So um, and I, I don't know what that process was. Was it just because we were all talking about different streets and I just don't recall us ever making a decision on Cleveland Avenue. And I don't know if um, um, Mr. Wright can give us more information. I just, I, I don't recall us ever making that decision on Cleveland Avenue. I just know we talked about some of the complaints, but I, I, I felt the bigger conversation was wanting to get neighborhood roads done versus uh, Cleveland Avenue. So, you know, that's my recollection. And I know uh, Councilwoman Zigus is the other, the third person on our committee. I don't know if she has some comments before we start asking questions of the administration.
Hey, all right. Hold on a minute there, Dahlia. Is that, I just want to clarify this, is that the monies in the MVH fund come from the gas tax and the new legislation that was passed about three or four years ago, that they ha- half that money has to be used for road paving and not for use like in what we used to do is do, uh, use most of that money or, or independent. They, a lot of the money was used in the street department. So.
And it's based on the mileage of the municipal city, though.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, it's, it's based on the total mileage of the city. Um, so that's.
But still, the fact is, the, the fact is, is um, what I was told, and I think that we should remember this, we need to find out if the state does care if that money's paid out of a TIF district or not. And, and to get that clarified. That, you know, and uh, now if that's a fact, well, I guess, you know, we'll have to find out.
It is a fact based on the language. Um, repairing streets is a maintenance item.
Well, okay, what, 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 I, I don't want to argue it because, you know, Jim Myers talked about when you, you know, the construction and maintenance. You know, we talked about that a little bit.
I, I, but I, I think, I still think Cleveland is an economic development area. So I, I, I think there's some opportunities for us to do some stuff with some other projects. Um, Councilwoman Zigus, so that we don't monopolize the time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Me and you will talk the whole time. So.
I gotta get my foot in here. All right, no, I, I do agree with Paul. Our decision was let's see which streets need the most work, put those in order and do those in that order. And I think that was our last meeting. That was what we came up with. So I think this ordinance is in danger of having us lose a chunk of this MVH money because those streets in the TIFs will no longer count towards our total number of streets. So that's gonna cut our money. So we can't cut our money just to, just to spite ourselves. So I think we need that list. I think we need, rather than an ordinance, policy. The policy in the city should be, any grant that's applied for that is gonna require our contribution from the city council has to go in front of us in some way, either in a committee meeting or something because.
It's in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance that I'm drafting.
Well, right, but I'm saying like, it, it could be just policy, like this is what we do because it's right. Instead of, you know, we are following the law. But I really do think that we had that list of streets to go in order. And, you know, that Cleveland's not really supposed to be on the topic today, but like, I don't know how that happened because we're supposed to do the streets in order. And I don't think it's fair to exclude people who live in a TIS district because like, they also need their streets fixed. The worst streets should go first, and I totally understand. And I think we should have a workshop and kind of discuss, so it's very clear to us what's gonna happen with that money. So.
Can we ask Mr. Wright to, to chime in? Because I, I, I think there was some confusion. I know that I sent a note to you and I was like, when did you make this decision? You know, this is, this was not the will of the committee. The committee is, is myself, Dahlia and Paul, and we didn't make it, we didn't take action at that meeting or make a decision. At least I don't recall that. But I would like to know, you know, kind of that, that process, what happened? And because we were talking about what was on the books for us to vote on February for that, that, for that project to be turned in. Um, I thought there was gonna be the next wave that was turned in, and that's where we're at now. And that we were gonna have some input. But now, from what I understand, is that that decision was already made back in February to do Cleveland. So um, can you kind of walk us through that? And then um, when is the next wave? Because I know we've been seeing lists now, but it's like, you know, now we're on the hook. Um, well, and, and that's what I want to say. We're actually not on the hook, but I want to make sure that um, we understand what the process is. Because we feel like we had that long conversation for um, a council meeting and a workshop. And we're still back to where we were back in January. And um, we just don't want it to happen again. I know that I'm, I'm putting legislation together for it. But I mean, you're asking, we're like, you, you're telling us four hundred fifty dollars, four hundred fifty thousand dollars is gonna be used. And none of us really agree that that's where it should be used at. It's like you're trying to, like, we're being forced to do something.
Can I, um, well, I put out the list of streets. When I first hired in, I put the list of streets out. And I sent it to everybody who worked in like Michigan City. And we got crickets. Nobody said nothing. Councilman Paul came by and said, hey, let's do uh, you know, York Street's fallen off the planet.
Right, you, you went to that. I'm trying to figure out from the time we had our committee meeting, because you gave us that back history at our last workshop. I'm trying to fi- find out what happened after the workshop to put us where we're at now.
So, we did York Street. And then I started on the next list. I, it's not complicated on my hands. You want a list, look at the map and pick a one, two, or three. Those are the targets. And I send out a list almost weekly of the streets. Now, Paul has put on three or four streets. Ms. Tracy, Councilwoman Tracy, has put on a number of streets. You yourself, uh, Councilman Angela suggested a street. And I've added each of those streets to the list. Councilman Don comes in and says, I need, you know, take a look at this street. And I add it to the list. It's no more complicated than that.
Right.
As far as Cleveland Road goes, apparently I was at a different meeting. Everybody there thought it was a good idea to pave Cleveland Road and patch the bumps and the, and the rough uh, surface down there. And so the, the discussion was, let's get money into the streets. So we took about half of the grant, put it on the Cleveland Road. The other half of the grant, I'm working on the streets that you guys have submitted to me already. So that's pretty much how the list goes. Uh, everybody, as far as I know, everybody's had input. Uh, it's, it's very simple to get input. It's not complicated. I mean, you can send me an email and say, I want this road, this road, this road. And if it's a one, two, or three, just like Councilman Paul says, it's fallen off of the planet. It needs to get fixed. And so I add it to the list. And so is it a priority basis? Yeah. I'll take your list and I'll take the ones and the twos and say, oh, God. These are reconstructions. We need to get these first. And then we'll take the twos or the, you know, the threes and then, and then feed those in, you know, to fill up whatever money we have left in the MVH or whatever's left on the grant. I wish it was more complicated than that. It's just not.
Right, but I, I just didn't know what meeting. I don't recall, I don't know what meeting that, where the decision was made about Cleveland Avenue, but.
Well, the whole discussion went around getting, you know, getting some money into the neighborhoods, and I don't know. And as far as whether it's an ordinance MVH, that's not my place. You guys tell me where the money comes from. I really don't care.
Okay. That's, that was what I was gonna ask. It doesn't, it, it can come from, it can come from multiple sources to get.
Yeah, I told, I told Mayor Perry, I says, you put a printing press out back and print it for all I care. I don't really care where the money comes from. And the only criteria I have is, is it, is it a one, two, or three?
Do we know how much money we have in the MVH? Is, is that depleting it, or is that half of this draw, or do we have?
You get about, on the MVH comes with a monthly uh, dispersment anywhere from eighty-five to maybe a hundred and five thousand typically on an average. And I am not the controller. Okay, so if you want real live data, get it from Yvonne. But you can look at it on the website at the, you know, the state auditor's place. You've got it on here, how much they send to each city. And into each, that's not complicated. Just Google it and you can go look at it. But on an average, it's something like eighty-five to a hundred and five, you know. E- each month is different, right? Depends on how much gas tax come. So each month, you know, each month.
If I may, I, I want to clarify something. At that workshop, there was one individual that didn't say one thing about Cleveland Ave. And that was myself, because my focus is after that first uh, round of uh, the way the grants, what money was spent, I, I'm focused on the second ward. That's my responsibility first and foremost. I can understand, but the, I think the bottom line is like what Dahlia said, is I thought we had a consensus that we have to come up with getting the bad stuff done. And there's a lot of bad stuff out there. And we have to remember, you know, legislation or no legislation is a simple word, which make, makes life go around, is called cooperation. So, I see no cooperation in the way this grant was put together. And the thought process of who decided it, because I know it wasn't the city council members. And I just wanted to get that, get that out there in uh.
For the next application, you guys, you guys told me, you guys basically said what the priorities were. Paul, you gave me your str- Councilman Paul, you gave me your streets.
You can call me Paul. It's all right, just call me Paul.
Parliamentary inquiry, are we on a first name basis or can?
It's as far as I'm concerned, you know.
Are you guys okay with first names or?
Yes.
No. Okay, all right. So now you made me lose my place. So, uh, but, but I, 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 along those lines, you guys basically, at least three of you, four of you, Don's not here, basically set next, next submittal for the grant. You guys already determined.
See, I think that's where we're confused. Maybe, I think it's a timing thing that we're, we're missing. Um, because we were here two months ago. We were talking about a grant that had to be submitted by February.
January twenty ninth.
Okay, and that one, though, we, that's where we had to have, we had to, we had to have uh, the council meeting. And we had to vote on the money for the match.
And it's a different, it's a different submittal. The submittal you were voting on was sent in like October or November of last year. Those were the funds that you were matching.
Okay, right. So those were the funds we're matching. So, you know, we had that, that, that whole uh, conversation about the different streets and the next submission, whenever you're preparing for it, that we would like input. Now, that was, that was, that was back at, at the end of Jan- sometime in January, early February.
It was late January because the submittal was due on the twenty ninth.
Okay, so we had the, the workshop, and we talked about all the streets, and we were saying how, when is your next one? You know, when is the next one coming? And because we would like to have some input. Now, that was in January.
Now, I thought the next one was in March. I thought it was gonna be around this timeframe here. But it wasn't a day or two after that meeting that we found out that the call for projects was January, I believe it was the twenty ninth. Which means, submit it, get them in. And so I've been calling them for uh, for sake of uh, communication, CCMGA.
Right.
And CCMGB, all right? Because you get two each year, one in the fall, one in the uh, spring. But rather than just say, call for projects in fall, it's just CCMGB.
Okay. So maybe um, one of the council members can clarify, or even Skylar. And when we were voting on that and had to get everything in in advance, I thought it was for a project that was already um, approved, and now we had to pay it or, or we had to approve this or lose it. um approved, and now we had to pay it, or or we had to approve this or lose it, was what I thought. And then the next proposal was coming that you were gonna be submitting into the future, and we're gonna talk to you and have another meeting before that, or whatever it was. And and decide what those were, and and then we get the memo on February twenty twentieth or twenty fifth stating that Cleveland Ave is the one that's gonna happen. And that you're gonna take two hundred fifty thousand dollars from RDC and four hundred fifty thousand dollars from MVH to match the one point four million is gonna take the fix just, you know, to deal with that road, right? And and I, that's why I asked, well, when, when, when was this submitted? Because I didn't think there was, we didn't, we didn't have another meeting, so. You know, we've been giving you streets, but now that's not until the next round, I believe, right?
Correct.
And Councilman Paul kept telling me, Angie, I think it's been submitted already. I'm like, no, they have, we haven't talked about it. He said, I I believe it's been submitted. And he was right, it was already submitted. And that's where I think we missed it, and we and and that's why we, these, this legislation keeps is showing up. Because it's like we're afterthought on the process for, you know, getting things done, but then.
Well, you guys are totally in the loop. I send.
And and this.
Almost weekly, I send out an update to the mayor, at least the last six weeks or so.
And we get them every week.
To Councilman Don said, you know what, let's be try to get more transparency.
But we got to get back to the 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 thing on the agenda. So what's on the agenda is talking specifically about exclusion, excluding MVH funds outside of the TIF. And I know that we have um folks on from the RDC. And so I I don't wanna drag on, but we do probably need to um get some input and get their thoughts on um what that, what that means and what that looks like. Um, I I saw that Attorney Serenek is on, um, I see that Skylar is on as well. Um, but that we have, what we need to focus on, we kind of have the backstory now, but is the um the actual um ordinance that's on the agenda is um not utilizing the MVH funds um inside the TIF districts.
I I just want to say this is that uh I am gonna have to leave the meeting early, so I'm gonna turn it, because I have, I have to go to work this evening. But I just wanted to say this train of thought, is that I I I really think that, you know, as I said before, the cooperation and Angie and Dahlia and Tracy, you know, as council people. I've worked with, I've worked with three different mayors. And I I I'll say it now and I'll say it again. I've never seen this kind of uh my way or the highway. And there's no cooperation, and and Angie, you are correct. We didn't vote on anything. We discussed it. And that's the whole uh my train of thought is that, okay, discussing something is, okay, if we wanted to do something, then why didn't we have a a workshop ASAP? And why are we using, and I I'll put, make this point, I guess it would be more palatable to me if if you wanted to be even Steven, why are we using so much MBA uh money? And um uh so much MVH money out there. It's just like the grant before that. So they say, well, you, I think we had two hundred thousand. What I, I'm just, I thought that was was said, that we had one eighty left over from last year. And, but here's the whole thing. Now, we have a whole year. We're going into another year. We have, I think, I don't know how many more uh grants available to get them, but I'm gonna check into this whole calculation uh thing. Because I'm not gonna sit here and and I wanna know, but the bottom line is this. We have a city, we have residents, and I will tell you, and I'll take anybody out with me because I know my neighborhoods. There are roads in the second ward that haven't been touched and need to be done for over thirty-five years. There's one neighborhood that their gutters are already, they don't have gutters because they've been paved and and so we have to correct these things. And I understand what Jeff's saying, and I understand what Skylar is saying. I understand the political end of this whole thing. But the real issue is, is we need to you know, I guess, I guess my thing is that you could use the money, there's, i- is there a amount that you are limited to, to ask the state for? I just want a simple yes or no. Is there, or or you can only go up to a million on any grant, Skylar? I- is there a ceiling on your grant process?
Are you talking about from a redevelopment fund?
No, I'm talking about in general on the grant process.
You're eligible for a million dollars from CCMG per year.
Per, per year. Okay, so what, what that being said, we already if we're limiting ourselves on what we can get done. And my point is this, yeah, the bottom line here is that the TIF areas don't wanna use their money. And I don't think, I don't like having, you you know, Angie, we talked about this. I don't like having being forced into a corner. I don't like it in my life. I don't like it in the legislative process. I try, I, I don't do that to people, and um I think we're being forced into a corner constantly in the first process, and now now. So, I uh, I think that I don't wanna keep going over this, but here is the bottom line. What's the plan? They're worried, what, I just wanna give you this example, and I'm gonna bring it out at our meeting. We're talking about Cleveland Road. Where are we at with the Dune Town Cryer Road? Did we figure out that we own that yet? Are we gonna do that? Skylar?
Yes.
Okay, are we gonna do, are we gonna take care of that? Uh, are we in the midst of doing that connecting road to the Walmart uh Plaza? Is that being done? Are we, is there action? Are, did you come up with a plan to move the wetlands? Are we that far along?
No.
And that's been sitting out there for twenty-some years.
We've engaged Haas to to do all that for us, so that'll be happening in the near future.
Yeah.
My point is, is that it's been sitting out there for so long, and that's what should be focused on. The way I see it as Cleveland Road.
Can I ask?
Cleveland Ave, so.
Can I ask a question, Paul?
Sure.
It's not for you, but it's based on what you said. So, so, so we get a million dollars for in uh a million dollar, up to a million dollar match. So, this, this one road is gonna take seven hundred thousand dollars of the one million we get for the year? Is that correct?
If, if awarded, yes.
Okay. So the, the, the last one we did was based up, was last year's, um.
Correct, correct. And and Angie, just reminder, there was gonna be no paving last year, but the Redevelopment Commission stepped up and said we don't wanna let just a million dollars go, so, because it's a one-to-one match. So that's literally, I mean, we, that's how, what we did, because it's e- every year you don't pave, it actually costs you more money to pave. So you're actually losing money.
And the bids came in favorable, so you do have instead of what you're thinking to be three hundred, you probably have closer to five or six hundred available to apply for. Simply because the bids came in favorable.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be less money.
Correct.
Well, more to apply for to the grant, for the grant.
Yeah, but you gotta, you, we max out on a million dollars, so how much did we lose la- last year by doing anything?
You're in, you're, you're into a new cycle right now.
I understand, but point is, is that we should have been sitting down in the middle of the year last year getting ready for the fall. Nothing happened. Now, that that's not me. That, that's not me. That, that's should be coming out of the planning department and the administration. I, I made my concerns made.
Perspective, where it's coming two ways. It's coming two ways. So Paul wants to submit some streets, Tracy wants to submit some streets, Angela wants to submit streets, Don wants to submit streets. I have no trouble. I don't even really care where the streets come from. They can come from the mayor. As long as they're a one, two, or three, I really don't care. But you can't have it both ways. You guys can't say, well, I want this street, this street, this street, this street and this street. And then come back and say, well, then the other side, and then not have anything from the other side coming. I don't, I don't know how that works. You can't, you can't, it doesn't work both ways.
Let me add one thing. The one thing that I would say, though, is I never, it I don't expect you to pick a street based on me turning it in. I want to know that, like you said, Mr. Wright, that if it's a one, but let me say, if I give you ten streets and they're all twos or threes, and there's ten ones, I expect you to do the ones. Not just because I gave it to you. So, I I'm turning in streets based on how bad they are, but it's still up to you as the professionals to tell us, okay, you really should.
I do that without thinking. When the one, when you guys submit the streets, I look at you know, I look at Paul's streets, and he's got a two and two or three, three submitted, so the very first one that goes is his number two. That's the first one I'll work on. And Tracy's area. I, I honest to God, it's a shambles.
I know, I just want the public to know that you're picking them based on how bad they are. I just don't want them to think we're just giving you streets and you're just going with them. You are ranking them and and prioritizing them is what.
And as long as, so I guess the bottom line, as long as you guys send me a one, two, or three, I'll categorize them, and I'll just.
Right.
So.
I don't want them to think we're just picking out streets and fixing them.
So if you sent me a four, I mean, I would go look at it and I'd go, Jesus, no, we're not doing that one.
Right.
And then I would email you back and say, you know, maybe there's a better one in your work. You know, something like.
So Attorney Serenek, can you, um, because it's, um, we're forty-five minutes in. Um, uh, just, uh, di- what, do you have any comments in reference to the restriction um in this ordinance?
Yes, um. Yeah, you you've identified a way in the ordinance that basically is conveying, we're directing the Redevelopment Commission to engage in a, in a maintenance activity that's ordinarily reserved for city services, for municipality. And and the only case law in the uh that that deals with this says you can't do that. That any expenditure of Redevelopment Commission funds has to be done for an economic development purpose. We, when we had our workshop early in the year, we covered uh the the itch, the the situation of where can we pave roads and can we pave sidewalks? And the answer to that question is yes, we can. And we can do so when we can clearly show, and we make specific findings in a public meeting that um that the, that the paving of this road, whether it's in a TIF or directly leading into a TIF, is for an economic development purpose. But to simply say that we are not going to fund um the TIF uh with MVH money or any other quote city money, and I don't like, that's, that's probably a very bad way of saying that. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna use city money for a TIF area. Uh, it is contrary to the law and contrary to the statute. Um, being more direct, there are, the the way to do this would be, and again, I'm gonna call, I'll quote, call here. And that is, we need to have cooperation and and a plan, a joint plan between the council and the commission, where the commission would say based on our funding, we have X number of dollars available that we can do for um that we can allot towards a sidewalk repair or a street repairs or something, or some combination thereof. But we just can't pick a street and say, we're gonna do it. We should pick a street consistent with the requirements of the grant, as Jeff identifies. And it's what we've done in the past. Uh, and then we say that we're gonna do this for an economic development purpose, such as the manner which I think we did out in uh, out in Ohio. Um, where that street was done using TIF money, uh, using a bond, but the whole idea behind that was the Economic Development Project, excuse me, for that, for that particular project. So, yes, i- is there a strict prohibition within the statute that says you can't use TIF dollars for street repairs? No. Uh, is there a strict prohibition of using TIF dollars for maintenance? Yes. Um, so what does that leave you? It leaves us, I think, a- an opportunity for the council and the commission to identify areas, streets, sidewalks, sidewalks, where um we wanna look at, we wanna work towards, we wanna identify as a project as being necessary in the economic development of a particular area. So, I I I even the language of the ordinance is just, i- it's just like waving a flag in front of the State Board of Accounts and saying, you know, come, come, come find that our expenditures here are in error or against the law. And asking the State Board of Accounts to find you and to charge you with administrative costs. Um, and in spite of all that wasted money that should be given to the State Board of Accounts, you'd be ordered to give the money that was spent by the Redevelopment Commission for street repairs, as you've identified. You'd have to give that money back to the Redevelopment Commission. I mean, that, that's, that's the case history of the State Board of Accounts uh on these type of situations. So, there's a right way of doing this and a wrong way of doing it. I think the ordinance is an absolutely wrong uh uh and and contrary to the law way of doing so.
I wanna interject at this time uh to clarify my position on that. Mi- Mr. Serenek is. I have a limited time, sir. Is this, I have talks in length with Mr. Myers about reconstruction, repair, reconstruction, and maintenance. So I, I think that we need to understand and get, and I understand what maintenance means. It means that you guys can't go in and repair a bunch of broken curbs. Maintenance means you guys can't sweep the streets. Maintenance means that if the lines need to be painted, but it's not a reconstruction, the city's responsible to pave the lines. I understand that. So I think that, and we also, when you quote that maintenance, that we need to get the decisions and the lawsuits in front of the city councils, so we don't bias their position. I wanted to bring that out because you have referred to that several times, so I I think that the council needs to be aware of the definition. And I don't think, I don't think that we're gonna be cited by the Redevelopment Commission, but I'll tell you this uh for everybody. That land, that piece of legislation would not even have been written if there was cooperation within the administration. So with that being said, I I'm not as, I'm not ashamed of that legislation, and Mr. Myers did not tell me different. I, I'm not, I'm not ashamed of that legislation and Mr. Myers did not tell me different. So I just wanna make that clear now for the council members. Because I'm sure knowing Mr. Myers, he would have told me, Paul, you're out of line. We can't do this. So. Let's clarify that. But we can get a list. And we can find out about the lawsuit that Mr. Sernick's talking about. So I don't want you guys to get, uh. Biased or, or feel threatened by anything, cause I think that there's a way to do this. That benefits everyone. And I, I'll tell you, Mr. Sernick, I don't, I don't care. Um, about being badgered or being, um, put in a knot hole. Or a pung hole and hit with a wood mallet. And that's what's happened the last two, the, the two times and a. On these grants. But on the other flip side of that. How much money we're getting and we didn't have a project to get the rest of the million dollars on that grant. So we lost that money. So I guess if you really analyze it. Uh, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of different things going on here, but the, the, and also the bottom line. Is. There was. Keep, we keep referring in the second ward to York Street. Let me say this, and I'll have additional information for the council members. There is legislation on the book talking about. The historical brick streets of the city of Michigan City. But what's lacking? That after I analysis, I did some analysis, there is no funding being put in a fund. To work on those streets and maintain them. So in turn, if you go to York Street. And there's, let, let me say the key word, no planning to fix that street. And so, and by not planning, and, and, and I will say this, cause most of those brick streets are in the second ward. The streets are deteriorating at the corners. The legislation was packed, passed back in nineteen ninety-six. They haven't even done anything to shore up that road. I looked for a workbook that Mr. Boyd Phillips put together. It's gone. Can't find it. So, you know, we could go on and on, but let me say this is that I. I, I have enough background that I don't know everything. But I did learn a lot from Boyd Phillips. I did learn a lot from Jim McCarty. And I was gonna ask this. I don't know, did anybody contact the sanitary district about? Is there a condition out there where that road is, uh, uh, doing what it's doing? On, it seems like every what, thirty, thirty feet, there's a seam in it, and like a debit? I don't know.
Well, I know that we, um, need to get Mr., uh, maybe we should, uh, have, uh, Attorney Serenik. Or Jim Meyer, um, reach out and we get clarification on it. Um, I, I know that this is specifically about this. Um, ordinance. So if we can get some clarification, um. Or if, or send us the code on, you know, you know, how the MVH fund is calculated is one thing. Um, how we get our draw what included, how that's calculated would be helpful. Um, I don't know if someone can answer that. And then the, the, um, other item is for Jim to reach out to. Uh, Mr. Serenek and have that discussion, cause I would like to know. Uh, you know, legally, from the legal perspective, um, Attorney Serenek gave us, gave us his, um, interpretation, but we probably. Um, I know Jim, uh, draft, helped draft it, but we probably need to confirm with him that. He, you know, he's looked at any case law or anything around it, just to, to have that information from him. Cause I, I know we're coming up on an hour. Um, I, I see that, um. Councilman Fitzpatrick and Councilman, uh, Tillman are on, Councilwoman Tillman, I don't know if you had any comments.
I do have one, uh, comment. I'd, I would like for, um, if possible, Attorney Serenek to. Provide the council with the case law that he was referencing and I do think that it would be beneficial that, uh, him and Attorney Myers. Kind of share notes and see what the ordinance we have is, uh, gonna do. In contradiction to what the case law says is possible to do. And, um, I'm not on the committee, but I would also like to, uh, maybe the committee, uh, could consider. At the meeting, not, uh, reading this again, but maybe tabling it again until we can. Get to the point where we have clarification of where we're sitting legally, so. We're not put in a situation where we're doing something that's not possible. So, to get what we're all trying to get done, which is road repair throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I'm gonna have to exit and, uh, cause I got a time schedule. I, I apologize Tracy for not getting you on, but. I will give you a call this weekend and everything that was said, I'm gonna, on my. Way to work, I'm gonna give, uh, Mr. Myers a call to get some of this information put together.
All right. Well, we won't take any action since I know that you're here, but, um, um, drive safely.
All right. Yeah, I, uh, I, I appreciate everybody's discussion. I gotta go. And I'll see you guys. I will give everybody a call. Like I said, I gotta, I gotta, guys, I gotta work midnights. Thanks. All right. Bye-bye.
So going back to that, um, so have Mr. Meyer reach out to, we'll have him. Reach out to Attorney Serenek to discuss it, um, because again, we don't wanna do anything that's out of order or if there's case law. Um, we wanna make sure that, you know, we, it's done right if it's gonna be done. Councilwoman Tillman didn't, I'm sorry, Dall, you take over after, uh, Tracy, um, go ahead and say what you guys say and then I'll. I'll let, um, Councilwoman Ziegus take this, uh, help us in the, uh, meeting.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Dite. Um, just short and brief. My only question or clarity that I wanted is in regards to the, um, MVH funds. How did we actually, how was it derived of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? If this was something that we, the council was supposedly had agreed upon.
E- estimate, that's, um, I know Mr. Wright is on, but it's typically estimate till the bids come in.
Skylar, basically Skylar s- said that, uh. Redevelopment Commission would basically be willing to put up two fifty. From which we knew about how much the road was gonna cost, so we cut it in half. Skylar said he thought, you know, the development commission could, you know, the RDC could. For lack of a better term, pony up two fifty and then that left a balance of the four fifty.
Yeah, we didn't know what the cost was. I asked our president, I said, would we be willing to put in something? You know, not knowing, have we talked to our attorneys about maintenance? Have we talked, you know, what's the number that I can give Jeff to get an estimate? I said, I talked to Chris, I said, you know, we might, I'd have to talk to attorneys, I'd have to talk to our, our financial analysts. You know, I, there's a lot of other things you have to do and consider. But I said, you know, program, and this is before we even did, talked about anything. I said, program in like maybe two fifty for now, that's being really conservative. Uh, and see what it's gonna cost, not knowing that it was gonna be a one point four million dollar project at the time.
I would pose a question though here before we break up. And that question would be, and I'm not even sure I'm supposed to ask it, but like. Councilman Fitzpatrick and the other, uh, I think it's Mr. Simmons out in their wards. Their wards are primarily swallowed up by the TIF, but they have lingering roads. Would they potentially go to the RDC and petition them to have the roads done? I mean, that would be the process, right? And Paul left and he, Paul, I looked at his ward and overlaid the TIF onto his ward. He's, he's pretty much in the clear, but he's got some fringes of one, you know, one or two segments that stick in there. I mean, do, does he go to get those one or two segments? That are three hundred feet long paved, you know, I don't know. Uh, those are things you guys need to think through, I guess, as you're evaluating. I, I threw it out there just for your consideration.
And just one other, so this second phase of this list. Uh, is there a cutoff for submitting streets and sidewalks that need to be looked at?
I don't know when that date is. I know that I wanna be ready. When they make the call, because when they made the call for the, in January. There was less than, as memory serves, like two or three days to get it done and get it in. Yeah. So, I mean, they just, they just came and said, they just came and said, grants due. On the twenty nine, I, I want, I wanna say the twenty ninth, that's what my memory is stuck on the twenty nine. I don't wanna be caught submitting CCMGB, the second half of the grant. And then have them say, well, it's due at the end of, you know, March, or the end of April. So if you guys have streets, continue to get them in, I'll continue to prioritize them. And, uh, and I will take care of the numbers, right? I'll take care of all the tech stuff. I'll run the thing up and apply for as much money. As long as you guys keep feeding me streets, I don't really care. As long as it's a one, two, or three, I'll run up the tab to make the grant for.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, uh, back to the Cleveland project, it kind of was a surprise to us. And, you know, it seems like the RDC committed two fifty, but is there any way they can take a bigger portion of the match? So that we don't have to spend four fifty of it. So I'm just wondering, since it is in. A TIF area as far as I can understand, and it does, you know, lead into a TIF area. So I was just wondering, maybe the redevelopment commission would have some. Can now back it up and, and put more money into it.
So. Skylar, can you, can you?
Mind, I know that we're over our time a little bit. Thank you for entertaining me. Just to say, I'm sorry Paul left, cause I really wanted to say this. Right now is that, um, so as Alan alluded to, i- it, it really isn't a matter of can we do these things? It's really about justifying how to do these things. Let's, let's clarify that. That, that's what it is. It's like. Um, okay, a road leading like Ohio Street, leading to the hospital in a major industrial corridor. Okay, yeah, you can tie that to an economic development function. Um, that's a pretty easy sell, right? We make a resolution, put in all these findings in it and. It's hard for the state board of accounts to say, okay, you owe us six million dollars back for that. Okay, that, that, that kind of. Sures us up, if you will, from a, from a auditing standpoint. So it isn't a matter of can't, can't, it's just a matter of how we do them and how we make the connection. Are we gonna be able to do every street inside a TIF? No, I don't think you'll be able to justify that. So, yeah, it could hurt like, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick. Like, you know, I think it's like eighty percent of his ward is in that TIF and, you know, it's like, there's gonna be certain streets that just. Maybe there are one, or maybe there are three, and unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to do them, cause there's no justification if it's a neighborhood collector street. And there's no business or no opportunity for economic develop, you know what I mean? It, it's gonna be a hard connection for that.
And the one TIF has zero dollars.
Correct.
So it could be twenty years again on top of that before anything.
Yeah. So, so, uh, going back to your question, Dall, your question was, can we do that? I believe the answer is yes. The answer is yes. We're looking into it right now. And I just don't think this ordinance is the way to go about doing it. I find it to be very divisive from the standpoint of like, okay, this person. I live on a residential street that may not have any, be able to be justified to be done through economic development. But now I can't get that paved, even though it's a three or four. I think it's just a matter of coming up with the list. Of, of what we want to pave and figuring out, okay, can we justify, Cleveland's on the list. Who's gonna pay for it? You know what I mean? I think that's a much better way to do it is to say, um, can we justify it through? Maybe, you know, through economic development. Now, keep in mind, some of the areas of the TIF fall off on twen- in, in twenty twenty-seven. I know that's a ways out and something to think about, but so, but my point is, is that we are ramping up some projects right now. So there may not be a lot of TIF left to pave at some point in time. What is what I'm getting at? That's the point I'm getting at. So I think by saying, well, what if there's no TIF at all, like on the East TIF? No TIF in there at all. Well, there, all those people out there are just. You know, there are still a lot of residential properties out there. Um. I'm not gonna debate if TIF's producing, if you should keep it and all those, there's a lot of things gonna happen there, so I think it's gonna produce. But. I guess my point is just, I, I don't think it's the way to do it. I think there's a much better solution and I think it's just a matter of submitting lists. Get the list together, prioritize that list. I think that's something Jeff is doing already. If he comes back to me tomorrow and says, hey, you know, there's a, a street here, it's in the South Side TIF. Do you guys think we could do it, justify it through, through economic development? I think that's a much better solution.
Can we solidify?
Saying something totally wrong, you jump in.
Up a couple of things. So, so the ordinance, um, so that the public knows. Is prohibiting the use of MVH pump funds for constructing. Or repairing streets within the boundaries of a city TIF district. And what, um, our city planner was saying, basically, if we exclude them and there's no TIF money there, their streets won't get done. It kind of was where, what we're saying. So we just wanna, uh, make sure that we, uh, come up with a better process. And not be handcuffed to a, an amount without the administration talking to us. And I think. That's the ordinance that I know, um, Councilman Fitz Valinsky and Fitz Patrick are co-sponsoring. So that we can put a process, you know, legislate that any matching funds the planner has to come before the council. And there can be emergency me, whatever, we can work through that, but I think. This right here is restrictive and, um. And I, and I guess, you know, what will happen is the council, um. This will be on second reading at the next council meeting and, and Councilman Paul, um, he may decide to amend it based on what we get back. Or remove it. I mean, um, he's the, he's one of the authors, but if, uh. If we find some things out differently, um, you know, like, like Councilman President Valinsky was saying, i- it really. This was re- in reaction to some decisions that were made. And, and that's how we got to this. So, um, when we talked, we were on different end of the spectrum on it. Um, um, previously and, uh, and I still believe we. The end result is what we want, but I don't think this is the right way to do it. And I, I shared that with him. Um, so, uh, count, um, oh, I see, um, um, Mr. Harris and is on, I'll make sure I acknowledge that you're on here. I see that you joined. Um, but, um, Councilman. Woman Ziegus, you wanna close the conversation, cause we're not gonna make a decision. It was more about the conversation, I think.
Yeah, it was a good conversation.
Oh, um, I agree. Um, I don't know if we make the decision now that we should table this or, you know, we'll discuss it at the council meeting. But I really do think we're not ready to. Do this legislation and I am actually not for it. I think it is divisive for the city and not a positive way forward.
Well, I will move then, since it's two of us here that we recommend to the council to table. Table this ordinance until we get some more clarification from the attorneys and, um. More information on how the MVH is calculated.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor? So that's the action that we'll recommend to the, uh, the council at our next meeting. Is that we table it till we have more information. Um, uh, Mr. Wright, what, is there a? Is, is there any deadline Skylar or Jeff that we're gonna be pressed on?
Um, I, I think the next round will probably be Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, it's usually in July. So, but that being said. We have a fortunate, uh, thing that Jeff can do this road segments for, so he really needs to probably make that list soon and. and start putting, he can buy down the cost of our CCMG significantly and how much money it does cost us. Um, which is a bonus for us. Um, but he's now gonna need to nail down those right, road segments and get them produced. So.
I just keep sending in segments. And then my final comment would be, is there any way that the RDC can look at the map and highlight the streets that they say are conducive to economic development? And take those under their umbrella and say, these are our, these are our streets that we know are conducive to economic development. And then the rest of them are now eligible for MVH.
But, well, I think that's what we're getting at is that when the streets are submitted and we identify which, cause they're all gonna go to CCMG regardless of funding. It doesn't mean, so.
But that could be done like on the Pacer. We could add a field to the Pacer that says this is an econ- economically conducive development segment, RDC, this is, this is our baby.
Well, I think that's a little bit more complicated, because what if, what if, what if there's a project that pops up on those streets? I think we'd rather than be submitted and then make the decisions based, to see where they're at. No way we're not just going through, take us. It'd be really subjective at that point in time to what's gonna happen on that street, you know, if that makes sense. Like, what if a new business moves in and we, they, they build a brand new building there or something like that? I mean.
Well, you can exclude the residential many now.
Yeah, I think that's probably a process or a standard operating procedure piece that we probably need to create. Um, you know, but this, so we've made our recommendation. Um, our recommendation is that we table this until we get more information on MVH and also, um, um, more information from, uh, Attorney, um, Jim Meyer after a discussion with, um, Attorney Serenek. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close. Um, so thank you all for participating and, uh, we'll move forward and get more information out to the public. Thank you.
Guys, thank you for letting us speak. Thank you.